We're gonna go ahead and get started. And Ms. Bell, if you would.
Hi, Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Castillo.
Here.
Ms. Gill.
Here.
Ms. Litten.
Here.
Ms. Russell.
Here.
And Mr. Webb.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. And if I can ask someone to move the agenda. Lock on with the agenda.
Did we adopt the agenda?
Thank you, Ms. Russell, there are second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Alright, and the first session tonight for the work session will be a update from the city manager about the 10-acre parcel. So, Mr. Shields, if you could just come peer to the corner here and you'll tell.
Yeah. That'll work.
Yeah, that's fine. There you go.
Is it alright?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick, just a quick, no introductions necessary for sure with Mr. Shields, but just want to say thank you to him for taking some time out this evening and sharing with us sort of the process that he's been going through on their 10-acre parcel site. But before he does that, I know he's gonna mention it tonight, but I do want to congratulate you and your team of folks that went to New York on behalf of the city and were successfully, I don't know if awarded is the right word, but successfully received AAA ratings from all the ratings agencies. And I think that's a pretty incredible, incredible recognition of the really incredible work that you've done on the city's part. And I want to personally thank you for that. And as we head into the building of the school, it's gonna make a difference. And so, so we thank you from the school's perspective. But welcome, Mr. Shields, and thank you for being here.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Noonan, and it is good for the city. And I think it reflects the fact that we've been at this now for a while, really planning pretty carefully for the major capital projects that we have coming up. And notably for a high school project, which will be our major financing push. So what I thought I would do tonight, and talking about this with Dr. Noonan before this meeting, I gave a briefing to the council just on our process for evaluating the proposals we received for the 10-acre site and the process we use for developing our request for detailed proposals. You all, as you know, are generally about three months ahead of the 10-acre site, so you've already developed your RFDP. We're doing that right now. And then just note a couple of public meetings that are coming up, just for people's general awareness. So first, with respect to the ratings, what that really gets to is the financing that we're going to do. We will sell bonds on May 23rd, and that is for the City Hall project. It is for the engineering and design for the library project, and it is for the engineering and design for George Mason High School. And so, the high school piece of the upcoming bond issuance is $650,000. And so, that's the, that's the first tranche of financing for the high school project. I'm sorry, 6.5 million. One decimal off. 6.5 million is the first tranche for the high school project. The, the rating agencies, for the first time in the city's history, have rated this upcoming bond sale as AAA, Fitch, S&amp;P, and Moody's. And Moody's was really the last holdout. They had us at AA+. And that's a big step, you know, for the city to be AAA across the board. That obviously is, is the highest mark we can have, and that's good for our taxpayers. It does reflect, I think, the work that the school board and the city council have done together, and I think it reflects really the good work on the, the school financial management as well. So, congratulations to you on it. The next financing, which we need to think about the next 12 months, what we'll be doing to prepare for the next financing. In May or June 2019, we intend to go to market for $65 million for the first tranche of the construction for the high school. So between now and then, the school administration will have chosen its construct, construction team for the high school and negotiated a guaranteed maximum price. And for the 10-acre site, we will have picked our top-ranked developer partner, and we will have executed a master agreement for the development of that site and done the land use approvals for that site. Those are the two things that will happen before we go to market about 12 months from now for the first big construction bond for the high school. There's no guarantee that that issuance will be AAA, so we need to keep our eyes on, on our business and fight to protect that rating over the next year. So in terms of an update on the 10-acre site, we did have a meeting of the campus coordinating committee about a month ago. Our next meeting is Friday, May 25th, about 10 days from now. And we'll provide an update for the campus coordinating committee at that time, and we'll probably do some work on, just a briefing on the proposals and some work on the RFDP at that meeting. I've passed out a three-page sheet that lays out the process we'll use for evaluating the proposals that we received. I think as the school board is aware, we've received six proposals, and that's a very good number, and they're very high-quality proposals. And so, it's, we're on track. Our evaluation committee includes the school board representative of Ms. Gill, council member Letty Hardy, Peter Noonan, myself, our planning director Jim Snyder, Mayor Tarter, PC Chairman Russ Wadiska, our consultant Bob Wolfe, and our EDA representative Bob Young. Our evaluation process will be supported by our project manager Lee Goldstein, the city attorney Carol McCosker, and Alvarez and Marcel. And Alvarez and Marcel really are key to our evaluation process, and they'll be helping us all the way through execution of an agreement a year from now. What the sheet just lays out is a schedule and roles and responsibilities. We had our kickoff last Thursday, and we were given an evaluation tool for the six proposals. And I'd be happy to share that with you if you would, I can send that out to you by email, just so you can see the tool that we'll be using to try to rank the six proposers. Ultimately, what we're trying to do is get it down to three, and that will be a recommendation to the city council. We anticipate that that recommendation will be made in early June, and we'll look for a council decision either at their June 11th meeting or at their second meeting in June, which I think is June 24th, June 25th. The, so that's a quick look. And just to remind you, similar to your process, this was really kind of a request for qualifications. Our purpose here is not to know exactly what, you know, we're not approving a development plan here. We're approving the top three teams. The people are the most qualified, who have the best financial depth, the most experience in doing 10-acre development projects, which are complex, they're, they're hard to execute, and we really want, and I think we're gonna have the opportunity to pick some of the best in the country who, who do this type of development. Our goal is to create a place that's gonna interact really well with the school campus, that's gonna be a place where students will want to be, that will be welcoming to students, will be welcoming to teachers, and will be welcoming to parents. We know that we've got, that the high school is where most, you know, the really key activities will, will be happening with all of our sporting events and everything that happens on a high school campus. And the 10 acres really just needs to embrace that and complement that. We were talking before this meeting, just sort of thinking about two years of high school construction, and then depending on the phasing for the 10 acres, possibly six years of private construction if they phase it in three chunks. That is a lot to think about, and in some respects, it's fairly daunting. But we'll work through the best ways to manage that construction, and I think we'll also work to try to compress it as much as possible. So that's the evaluation process. Be happy to answer any questions about it. I'll just say a word about the development of the RFDP, the request for detailed proposals. Our goal is to get a draft of that out for you all to look at in the next two weeks or so, and then through the first several weeks of June, have a public discussion about that draft, RFDP. We'd like the school board's input on it as well. The council will look to issue it either again on, in mid-June or at its, at the last meeting in June, June 25th. In that RFDP, I think a key thing that will be different than the first phase is that that's when we really, we'll get into value. The RFDP will have forms for the proposers to fill out. They will lay out what their offer is for the property, and we'll ask it in the structure of a ground lease with capitalized payments upfront. We'll ask for it as structured as a ground lease with payments spread out over time. And the third option we'll ask for is groundly, is a, is a fee simple purchase. And the purpose is so we can compare those three sets of numbers and understand the pros and cons of those different structures. Does that cover information that's useful to the school board? And if not, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Are there any questions by any board member? Mr. Castillo.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wondering how the economic climate regionally and nationally is looking with respect to this project and also with respect to borrowing costs.
That's, that's a good question. In terms of borrowing costs, we are, you know, we had modeled 3.5% interest for this, for this bond issuance. It's a competitive market, so what we have seen around the region is that they're coming in right now at about 3%. So we'll, we'll see. You know, markets can change, but 3% seems to be where the muni bond market is about, about now. In terms of the market for economic development, we are in the, what, 108th, 110th month of the, of economic growth since the recession. I think the longest consecutive months of growth after a recession is 120 months. The average has been about 96 for the past four, five economic cycles. And that is on, when we speak with developers, that's on their mind. In some respects, our process has some advantages in that there is really three years is gonna have to transpire before they can begin construction on this project. So I think in some, you know, people, no one knows what markets will do, but I think people do expect that there's gonna be some compression in demand. And so, having a three-year timeframe is not necessarily a terrible thing. That might be well timed for, if past cycles apply to the future, when people might be emerging from that. But that's all kind of beyond what we can accurately say. I think people do think that probably the, the stimulus at the federal level right now is gonna extend this, you know, probably to this economic climate for at least another year. That's generally what we're hearing. But other opinion, anybody's opinions is good, is probably what I just said.
Any other questions?
Last one. So with respect to the structuring of the land deal, how will that be decided with respect to ground lease versus outright sale? What, who, who and how is gonna make that ultimate decision?
Well, I'm envisioning that ultimately being the city council's decision, but it needs to be collaboratively with the school board. And there's one other key part of our process that we should talk about, and that is ultimately we'll need to do a subdivision of the school site. And where we've put that on our schedule is notionally next December. And December being the timeframe when we will have our, you know, really the four corners of the school plan really nailed down, and we'll have our top-ranked developer on board, and we'll know how that interface really needs to work. We've done an Alta survey of the campus, and we have a notional subdivision line right there, but we'll hold off on formalizing that until we really know how everything fits. That's all to say that, you know, that, right now, the school board owns this property. And as part of, I think, a coordinated effort between the city council and the school board and the financing of, of the high school, the expectation is that we'll work through collaboratively on, on how to do that subdivision. And then with that subdivision, I think the council would really be the best position to say, what is, what is the best structure for the city long-term? We have stated a preference for a ground lease. The city's gonna be here forever, presumably, and so it's good for us to be a long-term owner of land. There will be some pros and cons to that, and by asking for a value in the ways that we've asked, that we think we will ask for it, and that the draft RFDP is still just a draft, we ought to have pretty good transparency then as to what the trade-offs are for ground lease versus fee, fee sale.
I mean, ultimately, the, the school board owning the land would be required to take a vote on its disposition, correct?
Correct.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Anything else? If not, Mr. Shields, we appreciate you giving us the update, and I'm sure we'll get a few more of these throughout the next couple of years of this project, and but we definitely appreciate you taking some time and coming, sharing with us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and anytime that you would like an update, I'll, I'll be here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll move on to 2.02, and that's division goals, premier international baccalaureate school division in the country.
Turn it over to Dr. Noonan for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Good evening again. Tonight is sort of the second installation, if you will, of your curriculum regarding our schools' goals and our work around safety and security. So this evening, we have a crack team of folks here who are ready to present about being a premier international baccalaureate school division, and what does that mean and what does it look like? And as you'll recall, sort of the way that we laid out these three nights, this being the second, is sort of what is our, tonight, tonight really is around what is our current reality, right? Or what are some of the best practices that are out there? And then the third night is how do we close the gap between what are best practices and what our current reality is? And so tonight, you're gonna hear from Lisa High, our chief academic officer, and then we have Kevin Clark from George Mason, Genie Sebridge from CO, Jeremy Farrar from Mount Daniel, and Rob Carey from TJ. And I just, just at the elementary school, Jeremy and Rob have really done an extraordinary job, sort of carrying the water, if you will, on the international PYP program there. And as a consequence of their extraordinary work, they get to do something else next year. Because we, we've been fortunate enough through the budget process to have someone who's gonna be able to come in and coordinate the PYP program between the two elementary schools. But I just wanted to, to thank them publicly for their incredible work around keeping the, not even keeping, but getting the PYP program really rolling strongly. For those of you that had a chance to go see some of the exhibitions this year, it was absolutely incredible and just a lot of fun to, to see some of the kids that maybe some of you even had a chance to work with. And, and with that said, the extraordinary work of Genie and Kevin as well at the middle school and all under the leadership of Lisa High. So with that, as sort of a backdrop of what the evening is about, I'm gonna turn it over to Lisa and let her take it from here.
Alright, good evening. We've done introductions, so we'll go ahead and share a quick video with you about our program.
Since 1981, Falls Church City Public Schools has partnered with the International Baccalaureate to provide an academically challenging and balanced experience for our students. Over the years, Mount Daniel and Thomas Jefferson have been authorized as primary year programs, and Mary Ellen Henderson has been authorized as a middle-years program. What does this mean? It means that FCCPS is the only K-12 IB world school division in Virginia. As IB learners, our students of all ages come to school with a combination of unique and shared patterns of values, knowledge, and experience of the world and their place in it. All FCCPS learners strive to represent the learner profile, one who prioritizes inquiry and self-directed learning while being productive and responsible global citizens.
Alright, so we've done an introduction, so I will go through. As we always go back to our triennial plan, the IB program falls under our priority one, Students Centered Teaching and Learning, Strategy 1.2, to ensure all students develop critical thinking and creative problem-solving skills through the International Baccalaureate Program. And so, the IBO mission statement, to really develop students to be inquirers, to be knowledgeable, caring students, so that they can be, make the world a better place. And for us, the IB program really provides us with a common language, K-12, a pre-K-12 pedagogical approach to encourage our students to inspire, be critical thinkers, and to help them be ready when they leave high school. And we start that in kindergarten and go through post-high school, making sure that they are prepared. And in Falls Church, we want, or we strive to be the premier international baccalaureate school division. And to that end, we will continuously improve as a learning organization. What will make us premier? A lot of our, all of our framework for our teaching is through the approaches to teaching and the approaches to learning. And with that, we look at three approaches, through inquiry, and that's the asking, making sure that we're trying to figure out what do we want students to learn through our balanced curriculum, through our holistic approach to learning, and to build natural curiosities among our students. And then it comes the action. How will our students best learn? Make sure that we're showing the doing component of that through real-world experiences, through rigor, and to develop them to be global citizens. And then lastly, is the reflection, having students really be thinkers and figure out how they will know what they've learned. And this framework, we feel, benefits both our teachers and our students, because we both believe that when we have stronger teachers, then we will have stronger, stronger students. And so, with the IB program, Virginia has its standards of learning, and it's come out with the profile of the Virginia graduate. And right now, we feel that our IB program mirrors the state expectations for the profile of a graduate. And we'll go into the profile of a Virginia graduate probably at a different work session, but I just wanted to touch a little bit on that tonight and just share how, how we're meeting those standards already. So with the Virginia profiler of a graduate, they have content knowledge, workplace skills, community civic responsibility, and career planning. And so first, with the content knowledge, what students need to know. They mirror, they talk about the five Cs approach, and we have the learner profile and the approaches to learning that, that we use to address the content knowledge component. With our workplace skills, we want to make sure that our students are prepared, and we give them opportunities to be prepared for whatever they want to do when they leave here, to make sure that they have the options that they need. With our community and civic responsibility, through our service learning, through our exhibition and some of those programs that we've done, or projects that we have our students involved in, we're meeting that. And then lastly, through our career planning, there, we're making sure that we provide students with CTE options, as well as some of the service learning and internships and externships that they're doing now at the high school. IB and the Virginia profile of a graduate, and I just wanted to show you how they do mirror the IB learner profile, the IB approaches to learning, and the profile of a graduate. You can see that thinkers, making sure that our students are thinkers, whether it's through thinking skills, through the approaches to learning, or through the five Cs, the critical thinking and creative thinking, and then another place, communicators, that making sure that we provide them with the best communication skills and to be able to communicate and collaborate with their fellow, fellow classmates. And then with our approaches to teaching, it's based on inquiry, conceptual understanding, and global context, making sure that we give students an opportunity for collaboration. We have commonalities among the five Cs, the IB learner profile, our approaches to learning, and our approaches to teaching. And while our teachers are focusing on the collaboration and differentiation, we're also looking at ways for us to assess them, whether it's through formative assessments, summative assessments, using rubrics. And so, with our approach and in teachers, we are really creating deliberate strategies and skills and attitudes to permeate our teaching and learning environment. And now, we'll turn it over to the elementary to give you insight into the individual programs as well as the learning environments that they're creating.
Okay, so the first thing we're gonna talk about is inquiry, and we're gonna look at inquiry in two different places. First, within their planners, and also then within all of the other lessons that they do, because a lot of times IB, we focus so much on the planners, but it's actually, you're seeing inquiry throughout all of their lessons. The teachers are ultimately looking towards the highest form of inquiry, which is student-based inquiry, where the students are developing questions. So that's one thing that, you know, teachers do all their planning, and they lesson plan, and they do their group planning for the planners, but ultimately, if the students want to go in a different direction, they can ultimately go in that direction. I think that's one of the best parts of the IB program, is that allows for the student curiosity and, you know, hopefully that we're developing those types of learners for when they get to the middle and high school and they have to solve really hard, more difficult problems. One area that we responded to student inquiry was we felt like we weren't addressing with our kindergarten group, we weren't, we were talking about famous Americans, but the SOLs focus on male Americans. So this year, this teacher's delved into a little deeper and tried looking for literature and books and activities on female famous Americans. So one of our teachers did a Wolf Trap residency through the Wolf Trap Arts Program funded through the Falls Church Education Foundation, where she learned to do different, more dramatic arts things, and she actually dressed up as Amelia Earhart, came in and talked to the students about how she became what she was, and talked to them about working hard and all that. It was really, it was actually a lesson that I observed, and it was really, really, the kids were so engaged for five-year-olds to sit there and watch her and really believe that it was Amelia Earhart. One thing that we also have started doing this year is looking at this inquiry, is developing rubrics, where, you know, just basic rubrics in kindergarten and first grade, where we're looking at whether we can assess whether the students are understanding the central idea or not. So small, little checklist, something like that, so that when we come back together, we can use that as a common assessment that's more talked about in the middle and high school, but common assessment to kind of assess ourselves as a program, which we'll talk about a little bit later when we talk about reflection.
So I think, I think one thing that you'll notice if you look at these two pictures, that there's not a teacher in the picture. And I think that that is kind of something that strikes us. If you've ever walked through the classrooms of Mount Daniel, they run a really tight instructional model where, you know, you might have a teacher with a small group of students, four to five kids in front of them, but that means that there's 20 kids that are not being directly taught by a teacher. So what are those kids doing? We have set them up in a learning environment that is student-driven, that is independent, that's at their own pace, which then hopefully will lead to kind of student-driven inquiry, right? So they're asking questions, they're working together, they're, they're thinking, they're collaborating together. And obviously, you know, when they're seven and eight years old, they're not great at it, right? We are, we are putting them in position, and we're teaching them how to do it. And I think if you went back a couple slides, Lisa, one of the slides that Lisa had said elementary exposure, and that's exactly what we're doing. We are putting them in position to hopefully, once they get to the middle school, once they get to the high school, they've kind of developed these skills and perfected them. We absolutely know that our kids are not gonna be perfect inquirers. We know, you know, once they get to exhibition, that when we ask them to work with four or five other students on a project, that it's not gonna be perfect. And so, we, we fully believe that this is all part of the learning, the kind of the learning process. So when we talk about inquiry, when we talk about student-driven inquiry, our job at, at Mount Daniel and at TJ is to put the students in the position to kind of reach that point, so.
So the second part is action, and just like I talked about student-driven inquiry, we also, the highest form of action would be student-initiated action. So we don't necessarily, we don't want the teachers developing the action, we want the students coming up with some type of action they want to take. And one of the things we try to really develop at the young age is that there is no small action. Not everything has to be some large-scale project, but it can be little things like picking up trash outside, or one of our, a few of our classes are doing composting this year to have less trash. If students have an issue, like students wanted a, a water fountain on the playground, you know, write a letter to the principal, try to, you know, develop that kind of thinking so that students feel like they can have a part in this. One of the other things that our first-grade group does is they create a booklet for a new student in Falls Church. So if someone, or some, they use whatever medium they want, so either a PowerPoint or a poster board or a book of, if a new, if someone knew was coming to Falls Church, what would be the most important things for them to learn about when talking about their community and being a good citizen?
So we really appreciate, at TJ, we appreciate Mount Daniel kind of instilling these values in our kids, because... these values in our kids, because if you did, you know, Dr. Newton mentioned exhibition, if you did visit our showcase, you really saw some amazing projects with some really, really deep and meaty topics. This is our third year of doing exhibition, and I've seen it every year, and I fully believe that it is continuing to get better. You know, some of these topics were amazing, we had students that presented to the city council, we had, you know, I know we had students that presented to you guys, so we were, and I think to a person that visited exhibition, you know, to a person, they agreed that it was, it was really impressive. I don't want, you know, our action to feel like it's only fifth grade, it's not. It's, you know, we, like Jeremy said, we have kids at every grade level that are, that are looking to take action, that are outside of school taking action. We have Girl Scout troops, Boy Scout troops, that, you know, are full of TJ students that take action every day, so. We also made a really big push this year to, to really show that exhibition is not just a TJ project, it's not just a, a fifth-grade project, that this is a K5 culminating project throughout the PYP. So, kindergartners, first graders, second graders are building towards this culminating project. And I think that's why, you know, we're really starting to see kind of how impressive these, these projects are, and, you know, they're not stopping. You know, we had, we had a group that, that focused on inclusion, and they're still running lunch bunches today, and the showcase was, you know, a couple weeks ago. And so, we don't want it to stop, we want it to be a process, and we want them to actually, you know, have this student-initiated action be something that they do and think about every day.
One thing that we're looking towards is, in 2019, 2020, when the second graders joined Mount Daniel, is creating some form of inquiry project for the second graders to work on. It won't be a full-scale exhibition, but something, some type of capstone project that they can work on, that can showcase what they've learned so far with inquiry at Mount Daniel.
Okay, so, we talk about reflection a lot, and, you know, I think, at TJ, I actually, you know, sent an email to a couple teachers today to just try to get their ideas of what, and if they could put into words what reflection looks like in their classroom, and I got, you know, five different things. And so, I think, you know, if we were to work towards something, I think having consistent reflection in every single classroom, and what does it look like, and understanding what it looks like, would be kind of that thing, but I also fully believe that reflection is happening in every classroom. So, you know, you might have, you might have a summative project that, you know, a classroom is doing at the end of a unit, where every single student is involved in that activity, and that kind of, that is their reflection, right? Or you might have classrooms that are doing weekly reflections on the learner profile traits, or quarterly reflections on personal goals that they might have. And then you have class, then you have classes that are reflecting after every single concept that they learn, and every single skill that they, that they're developing, and, and so, reflection looks different in every classroom, and I, and I think that, that's a really good thing. But I also think that, that kind of being consistent, and, you know, as the, you know, I think best practice with the PYP would say, that we want to see what consistent reflection looks like in every classroom. And so, you know, I, we have this discussion at TJ a lot, and, and kind of, how can we really put into words what our reflection looks like, is kind of one of our next steps.
Teacher reflection is done at both schools, you know, it's not necessarily the same at both schools, but it's important for teachers to do that. They sit down for, you know, one to two hours a month, and talk about their planners, and talk about the central ideas, and talk about whether the central idea is still something that works for their students. And at this year at Mount Daniel, we've made two big changes to create more of an international theme, where we, for years, first grade had done Ghana Day, as their big, one of their big culminating activities for one of their units, and this year, we transitioned them to International Day, where they focus on four different countries. They focused on Germany, Bolivia, Russia, and Ghana, and they compared one aspect, they did dancing and fine arts among the four, so then the students were able to compare and contrast the different countries, instead of just focusing on one country. And I can promise you, they won't be the same countries next year, they'll be different countries, because it's good to explore that. With kindergarten, one of their big culminating projects has been their trip to Mexico, which drives one of their planners. Well, we finally got them to step away from just Mexico, and this year, they looked at Mexico and Canada, and kind of looking at our neighboring countries, and just comparing the two, doing similar activities. They still took their big trip to Mexico, they got on the plane, and the excitement was still there, but then they were able to do some comparison of different countries, which I think opened some eyes for some of the students, and also some of the teachers who had been teaching this Mexico unit for years. The last thing up there is program reflection, and that's a huge thing, and one of the reasons why Rob and I are going back and forth and presenting like this, is we really want the PYP program to be seen as, even though we're two schools, it's one program. So, we did two big things this year, was we did some joint PD sessions with the teachers, where they talked about commonalities among their planners, to make sure that there weren't things that were being taught in two different grade levels that were the same thing, or they weren't doing the same type of project. And we found out there weren't as many commonalities as we had thought. The second big thing that we did was, we had our steering committees from both schools sit in this room for a full day, and look at our action plans for 2015, 2020. When the PYP came two years ago, they gave us matters to be addressed, and then recommendations, and basically, those recommendations turned into action items. So we sat there, and one of the big, the big things we wanted to look at was, how many of those, which was, most of them, were the same at both schools, because we are one program, and that we could attack those recommendations with, you know, together, instead of doing the same thing separately. And I think that was really valuable work, and I think both groups thought it was valuable work, so it's something we'll want to continue next year, as we start looking towards self-study the following year.
Alright, so I'm going to talk about the middle-years program, and the middle-years program is grade six through grade 10, so Mary Ellen Henderson and George Mason High School. So the first thing, focusing on inquiry again, we're really going to take a look here at the written and taught curriculum. So you'll see over on the right-hand side, it has three images. The first one up at the top says, "You need this." So that image is a picture of teachers collaborating. They're in collaborative teams, they're talking about the curriculum, they're talking about strategies that they're using in the classroom, they're talking about assessment. So it's that planning component, and in the, the middle image you see is an actual, I know it's really tiny, but it's, it's a unit planner. It's the lesson plan unit that they have to create, and there's a lot of thought that's put into these, hours and hours of work that the teachers collaborate on, so that the bottom image actually happens. And that's the picture of the kids working in a classroom, they're, they're student-centered, you don't see the teacher, I don't even know if you can find the teacher in that picture, but they're working in groups. So you really need that teacher collaboration to get that really strong classroom experience for kids. And one thing that they really have been focusing on lately with the middle-years program is assessment, and the use of rubrics, and really having a lot of discussion with administrators and with teachers about what is quality assessment? What does it, what is it for? What does it tell us? How does it inform instruction? What kind of feedback are we giving kids? And how are we showing growth? So really, the whole premise is about using assessment to show growth, so students know where they're at, and, and where they would want to go, or should be, and how they can get there. And that's where the feedback comes in. So there's a lot of collaborative work that's been happening lately in the buildings, and it's really good work that, that we need to do. For the projects, NYPD projects, there's actually two of them, and these are what we would consider capstones, and when Ms. Hi was talking about the profile of a Virginia graduate, one of the things they mentioned in there were capstone projects. So the International Baccalaureate fits very nicely into what the state is looking for for the profile of a graduate. We have the capstone project, which is the exhibition, and we also have, in the middle-years program, a few that fit into that category. The first one being the personal project, and our inaugural year was this year, in March, and ten, our 10th graders, a little nervous kicking this off, because it's the first time ever that we've done this in Falls Church City, but they did it. And the majority of the kids in the 10th grade class, they worked hard since, for an entire year, on trying to figure out what a topic would be for their project. The project is supposed to be something that they're passionate about, and that they're interested in, and that they research, and they want to learn more about. A lot of times, these projects are based on action, and you heard, they were talking about with the exhibition, action, and usually, action is a lot of times service-oriented. So a lot of times, the, the projects that the kids choose are ones that help the community in some way, or it could be just they want to learn more about something. So these are some images of the kids who completed the personal project this year, and some of the work that they have on display there as well. We kicked off the new personal project for next year, they, they did a, a meeting about, what, two weeks ago, and the kids went through different stations, and were, were starting the, the whole process all over again. And it was really interesting, because I did get to talk to some of the kids while I was there, and they already saw what the other kids had done in March, and they're already very excited, so I'm just noticing a difference already, because they're already educated, they already know what's coming, and it's not like scary thing, that they don't know what to expect, they, they already get it. So it's really exciting to see that, too. One of the other areas of action that the middle-years program has is in eighth grade, which is a perfect place for it to be, because that is the last year that the kids are in Mary Ellen Henderson, so that's their capstone, is the community project. And they're already in a really good position for the community project, because they've been doing service learning for the past few years during flex. Service learning is not for the entire eighth grade, kids do choose to do that, but a lot of times, the kids will visit senior centers, they'll go to Mount Daniel, they'll read books to kids, they, they do different service-oriented pursuits during the year, and there are some advisors in eighth grade that, that help facilitate that. So, starting next year, we hope to kick it off so that every eighth grader will be a part of that service learning or community project. For reflection, there's three different ways, and again, this is very similar to the primary years program, where we reflect on our teaching and our learning, that's a very important process. So the first one on teaching, reflection, one nice thing with the framework for our unit planners, is that there is a reflection component built into the planner, and the reflection, a lot of times, we think of only after you do something, but what's really nice about this is they create a framework where you actually reflect prior to it. So before you walk into that classroom and start teaching a lesson, we ask the teachers to really think about that, you know, reflect on what you're doing when you go in that classroom, and what's your goals that you have for the kids, and, and how are you going to do the lesson with the kids, and how are, how are you going to get them engaged? So we have a prior, then there's that during teaching, so while you're working on that unit, you, we want the teachers to constantly be asking, "How's it going? You know, do I need to shift? Do I need to change?" Kind of like what Jeremy was mentioning a little bit earlier about, it's very student-centered, so if the kids start to go into a certain direction, because that's where learning is going, the teachers need to be flexible and shift in that direction as well, but of course, you have to circle back, you know, eventually, but it's that reflection during teaching, and then after teaching. After you've done it, "How did it go? What do I have to tweak? What do I have to change? What didn't work so well? You know, what else is out there that might be better?" And we ask them to do this in a collaborative atmosphere, so sometimes it's reflection individually, but also as a team with other teachers who teach the similar subjects. For student learning, the middle-years program uses rubrics for assessment. So one thing with rubrics is that the students know what is expected of them prior to the lesson, so they know what they need to do. So they, they can look at this, and they can reflect and be like, "Yep, I'm right at developing right now at a four, but I know that this isn't the only chance I have." By the end of the year, they can set goals for themselves, they can reflect on how they're doing, and they can say, "By the end of the year, I want to be at a six." So, it's very straightforward, they know what the expectations are, there's no guessing, there's no like, "Oh, you got that great, and now it's over, move on." There's no chance for you to, to become master that area. And then as far as reflection on program, we do an evaluation for the middle-years program for all the IB programs every five years, and we had the first one, which was really authorization, and considering it was our very first one, where IB came in and looked at our program to see if we were meeting all of the criteria, we met all 73 components that IB wanted us to meet for our very first year. One of the things was just like having people trained that were supposed to be trained, collaboration time for teachers to actually meet, making sure that all the subject areas had written and taught curriculum. So, they even told us, they said that this rarely happens, that a school achieves this with authorization. And then finally, with reflection, just tying back again to how we're connecting all of this with the state expectations, with profile of a graduate, and with assessment, is that the International Baccalaureate, especially with the middle-years program, put us in a really good place, because they have an area in the framework of our unit planning for assessment, and the assessment that they really encourage is that real-world relevant assessment with summative, that we try to assess kids on skills that they've learned, and they have to apply those skills in a real-world way. One of the acronyms they use is something called GRASPS. So the kids are actually playing a role, and the role usually is a career role. So again, it goes back to that profile of a graduate, there's a lot of career focus, so the kids could be a dentist, or they could be an engineer, or they could be an artist, and then they take those skills and apply it to show their understanding. The PBAs or performance-based assessments that the state has been rolling out, they've been eliminating those multiple-choice SOLs, and we know they've already eliminated the third grade, fifth grade, and sixth grade history writing and science, and replaced them with performance-based assessments. They are currently working on writing for eighth grade and 11th grade, that they have approved performance-based assessments for those SOLs, so the kids do not have to sit for a multiple-choice test for the writing in eighth grade and 11th. And in July, they're going to make the final decision on the history SOL for the eighth grade and for George Mason, so we're waiting to hear what they say about that. So, we're, we're kind of happy, because I know a lot of divisions were a little nervous about this, but we feel we got this, because, especially with the middle-years program, because we already have those performance-based assessments written within our summatives. We need to tweak them a little bit, but we're in, we're in pretty good shape. And that's middle-years program.
Good evening. I'm filling in for Dan Cosar, IB Diploma Program Coordinator. He's about up to here in IB diploma exams and AP exams, so he's, he's pretty swamped these days. The IB Diploma Program represents the keystone of our academic program. Everything we do, from PYP to NYPD, really builds up to the offerings in the Diploma Program. The Diploma Program is the, the main piece of our curriculum for 11th and 12th grade students. It, it consists of a core set of six academic areas, where students can take courses from each of the academic areas that you see on, on the circular diagram, in addition to three core elements. Those are Theory of Knowledge, Extended Essay, and CAS, as we call it, Creativity, Activity, and Service. So I'll talk a little bit about those elements. The, the Theory of Knowledge is a course that's required for, we teach it throughout the 11th and 12th grade year, over kind of the end of 11th grade and into 12th grade, and it really focuses on how do we know? What are some ways of knowing, and how are we certain in what we know? In today's age, with fake news and, and everything that's going on, what an incredibly important area for students to focus on. The Extended Essay is an independent research project that represents the first opportunity for students to really dive in independently, and conduct serious research, and, and create a product that's written and that's rigorous. Everything they do leading up to the Extended Essay, from the group projects at the PYP level, to the independent but more sort of informal nature of the personal project and the community project, the Extended Essay is really their first shot at, at an independent research project. Kids come back to us from college and tell us, you know, "All of my friends were struggling with their first research papers, and I was able to knock mine out, because I've done, I've done this before. I've written a 2,000-word essay, and I know what it's like, and I know what it takes." The Creativity, Activity, and Service, again, is this notion that we want to develop learners, we want to develop students that leave us as caring individuals, as reflective individuals, as balanced individuals. And so the CAS component of the IB program, you know, as opposed to an AP-style program, is really this holistic model of creating lifelong learners, and people who are committed and, and do things that are important. For example, creativity, activity, one of the students a couple years ago did a Humans of George Mason website, where he catalog, he, he was interested in photography, interested in, in people, and wanted to showcase some of the amazing folks that are in George Mason. So if you've seen the Humans of New York kind of bits that you see on Facebook or online, that was his activity project. That, that, while it used to be kind of an hour, you had to do certain things, now it's really, you have to show dedication over time, and you have to show that you've done something significant and shown commitment. And you have to show that you've done something significant and shown commitment to that process. So in addition to a rigorous academic program, you know, the IB diploma program really supports growth of learners, growth of individuals who will go on and be successful in life. And also focuses as well on some of the core elements that Jeannie and TJ and Mount Daniel folks talked about earlier, which was the approaches to teaching and learning. That's a main component of the IB diploma program as well. So there's continuity there. The extended essay is a process we've actually just kicked off this year where students are working on developing an inquiry question, conducting serious research and producing something that represents the consolidation of their learning, not just in their 11th and 12th grade years, but throughout their experience here in Falls Church. We have, again, the creativity, activity and service. Photo to the right, students as an activity CAS project started a Habitat for Humanities Club. And it's currently one of our most popular clubs. There's a waiting list to get on the build sites. They've worked on, I believe, four or five homes over the past couple of years. And it's what we call a legacy project where it's been passed on now for several years to a new student who is taking on running the CAS club or, I'm sorry, running the Habitat for Humanity Club. And it's just been a fantastic example of our students being involved, taking action, making the world a better place. And in the process of CAS, they are required to reflect on what they've accomplished, what they've experienced and how that relates to their being a, you know, the traits on the learner profile, how that relates to their growth as an individual. The TOK, again, this notion of how do we know what we know? And concurrently having that through the 11th and 12th grade year is important because it's also woven into the remaining six content areas. So within each of those curricular areas, teachers do bring up knowledge questions and do have opportunities to address the idea of knowledge and how do we sort of investigate things? And how are we certain about what we're learning? And so this is woven in not just in a course, but also throughout the curriculum. And just a couple data points here, this is from our 2016 class. The percentage of seniors who take one or more DP courses, over 80%. That's phenomenal in addition to considering our dual enrollment or AP courses, which brings that number up to above 90%. The percentage of seniors pursuing the IB diploma was 20% that year. And the percentage of students who earned the diploma in 2017 was 87%. So we hover around between 25 and 30% of our senior class that pursues the full IB diploma. The percentage of passing scores there, you'll see about over 80% and we often exceed worldwide averages. And of course, all of the hard work of our students and teachers pays off in our rankings, whether it be J. Matthews or whether it be the recent U.S. News and World reports where we were ranked number two in Virginia. So a lot of hard work throughout students' time at Falls Church really pays dividends when they reach the 11th, 12th grade years and they're exceedingly successful, both in state exams, but also in the diploma program exams. So overall, I would just note that the diploma program really has, as we've said, has been in Falls Church City since 1981. It's a huge draw for the community. A lot of parents that move into the area move in because we have an IB diploma program in addition to being an incredible school district. So we're proud of our IB program. The teachers have been working hard collaboratively to make sure that it's a great experience for our learners.
Thank you. And just in general, every five years, we have a reauthorization visit. And now that we are a K-12 IB school division, we asked the IB organization if we could have one visit. And so about two weeks ago, we received a letter saying that they would allow us to be a multi-school visit, which means one visit where a team will come and visit all four of our schools. And then we will get one report that tells us how we're doing as a division as well as some specific program information. And so in spring of 2021, we will have our visit and then our self-study will be completed prior to that in December of 2020. So we're excited about the work that we're doing and continue to make things happen for students.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mania.
Yeah, just to follow up even further, first of all, thank you all very much for your incredible presentation. I just, one of the things that I heard coming into the school division a year ago was some concern about the overemphasis of the international baccalaureate program in the city of Falls Church. And as I dug in and asked some questions, and I hope it was evident tonight, is that the skills that are taught in the IB program are the skills that the state is asking us to achieve. We're doing it in a way that's much more comprehensive, much more holistic and much more meaningful from a pre-K or K to 12 experience. And it's programmatic as opposed to just discrete skills. The other part of it that I think is equally important that I heard when I came in too is that this idea of international baccalaureate or rigor, if you will, was reserved for elite kids. And the truth of it is that all of our kids experience the IB program in the city of Falls Church schools, whether you're in special ed, ESOL, in poverty, or a general ed student, or an advanced student. It touches everybody. And so to somehow indicate that it's reserved for just some kids versus others is really not an appropriate way, I think, for us to think about this program because it really is a program until a student in the 11th grade or in some cases, the 10th grade decides to take their first IB course and head towards the diploma. Then it's a choice. And then students can make that choice to go forward with the IB diploma. But if they don't go forward with the IB diploma, our English 11, our English 12 courses are still taught with the ideals of international baccalaureate behind it. We're still asking students to creatively problem solve, to think critically, to communicate effectively and all of the aspects of the international baccalaureate program. So all of our kids, K-12, are getting that experience of being a K-12 IB school division. So I just want to make sure that when I think about what makes us premier, I think that's one thing that makes us premier. I think another is the fact that, you know, we've been recognized and certified all the way through. I think what also makes us premier is the number of kids that do go on to get the diploma, that follow through with that. Doesn't mean that every kid has to do that, just means that some decide to do it. Our success rate with the kids that do move forward with the diploma is pretty high. But at the end, what we want are well-rounded kids that meet the profile of a graduate. And that's what we're getting because of the IB diploma. If not for the IB, not the IB diploma, the IB program. And I would say this, if not for the K-12 IB program that we have in Falls Church, we would be looking for ways to integrate all of the skills that come with IB into our regular curriculum and our regular content. And that's a challenge that many school divisions across the country are taking on because their school divisions aren't set up to teach English using critical problem solving or creative thinking. It's here's the English curriculum and we move forward. So we are at a distinct advantage moving forward by doing this. And I also think the other thing that will help us understand what premier looks like is we are one of seven K-12 IB school divisions in the country. And we've been in contact with several of those to see how we may be able to benchmark our assessments and our projects against them so that we can see how are others doing in comparison to us? Because we don't know how we're doing unless we actually compare ourselves to somebody else. And so we're working towards that end as well.
Thanks. So are there any questions for any of our esteemed panelists here tonight?
I have some.
Ms. Layton?
I have multiple. I guess my first question is for Mr. Clark at the high school level. Maybe this is partially because I'm hearing a lot of 10th graders in my backseat talk about whether or not to pursue the IB diploma, you know? And they often say, oh, just take classes. It doesn't really matter whether you pursue the full diploma. So I guess my question is, you know, do we feel like 20% is about the right amount to be pursuing the full diploma? Or would we, is it better if more kids are doing it? Or what's your feeling on that?
That's a great question. And historically, we've been anywhere from 25% to a third of the graduating class. I think this year we have about 60 some odd. So now they're juniors as next year. So a little bit over a quarter for this senior class. It's certainly something we aspire to. The elements of the diploma program, students who complete a diploma, there's tons of benefit later on. There's research that backs that up. But it does require a significant investment of time and effort. And students are required to take six IB courses that last two years. And they're, you know, they take rigorous exams after each of those courses, produce a 2,000 word essay, you know, CAS and doing the TOK as well. So there are lots of students for whom they want to explore other options, whether it be music, whether it be going to the Arlington Career Center, whether it be maybe taking two or three IB courses and taking a dual enrollment course. And so one of the things that we also are proud of is that we do offer a variety. We have as many offerings as, you know, Marshall does down the road and we're a third of the size. And so we do pride ourselves that we know our kids and we, you know, support our kids in making the best decision for them and for their interests and for their future goals and their passions. And, you know, that means that for a quarter of our kids, that IB diploma is right for them. And I think that the rest of the students, it's not that they're not taking courses. The vast majority of our kids do take IB courses. And like this Dr. Nuneau said, you know, we're looking at ways to both increase the rigor of our general level courses and even considering, you know, having ways to offer all of our kids in certain courses, the IB curriculum. So, you know, we certainly, we probably fall a little bit above averages in terms of our participation rate with the diploma as well as our achievement rate with kids who seek and are awarded the diploma. So, you know, comparatively, we do really well in that regard. But if you're asking if we aspire to get more kids to do the diploma, yes, of course. We'd love for more kids to take that on, take that challenge on and find ways to support them in doing that because we know it's a great program. And so, yes, we always aspire to get more kids involved.
And I can add one thing. I hope that, you know, our first PYP learners, I believe, are eighth grade right now. And so hopefully, that number keeps going up because, you know, they will kind of experience this IB education. And so hopefully.
We talk a lot about kids that are experiencing rigor for the first time when they get to high school and that being a concern because kids shouldn't experience a rigorous course when they hit the high school doors. They should have experiences of how to engage with rigorous content way before they get there, way before they get to middle school. And so what Mr. Carey has pointed out is that we have this wave of kids that have been actively involved with a thinking process that engages students at a level of rigor that most kids across the country don't get a chance to experience. And I think that we are going to see more and more kids. So to complement what Mr. Clark said, I think the data bears out and there's a significant amount out there. But I'll call to your attention one in particular that was done by the College Board about 10 years ago that talked about students that took the most rigorous course loads that they had to offer at their school site and their success rates, not just in college, but in life. And not just in college, like the first couple of years, it was around college completion. And students that are taking the most rigorous courses that they have, that was offered at their high school not only got into college at a better rate, but also completed. And at the end of the day, that's what many of our parents are wanting, is their kids to go and to complete or to move into the world of work and be successful. And if you talk to every employer in the region, and we've talked to a lot of them around here, what are the skill sets that they're looking for? And the skill sets that employers are looking for are the same skill sets that our colleges and universities are looking for. So the more kids that can experience the academic rigor of an IB course and diploma, the better off they're going to be positioned.
Other questions? Mr. Anderson?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I have a question, I guess, Ms. Seabird, this would be for you, which is you were talking about basically, this was round one for the personal project. What lessons have you guys learned from it? What do you think are the takeaways at this point?
I think the mentoring, you know, of our kids, just making sure that the kids have somebody that is willing to work with them and listen to them and coach them a little bit. I think maybe the actual setup too, like of the personal project. I know there were some discussions about that and how to put it on display so that there's more time for the middle school kids, especially to be able to come over and see the work that the 10th graders had done. I think I heard that it was just maybe a little bit, not enough time to really get there and appreciate that. So I don't know, Mr. Clark?
I would say it's, our first go around was really successful in terms of the amount of kids that participated, the, you know, teachers really going all out and supporting their students that they were mentoring. I think that there still was a level of sort of stress of, this is new for me. You know, I have to do this thing and it's not connected to a class grade and, you know, why do I have to do this? So, but again, our students coming up, they've seen one iteration. And it was probably the highlight of my year, going around and talking to these kids who had invested, done something that they're passionate about. Now they're having an opportunity to share with me and other folks that went. And so kids who had now seen that, I think it will, it'll help. I think overcoming some of the anxiety, stress and sort of grumbling around the project is something we hopefully will improve upon.
Yeah, I think that's the big piece. I think it's the communication because I think the first year was a little rough like it is with anything, right? You're trying to get it off the ground because people don't understand it. The kids didn't understand, the teachers didn't understand, the parents didn't understand. And we really had to do a lot of work educating everybody about what the purpose of this was for. It's not supposed to be for a grade. It's not supposed to be stressful. It's supposed to be something you're passionate about, something you're interested in. Don't choose it because somebody else told you to do it. Choose it because you want to do it. But I think what I noticed is some of the kids didn't maybe believe us. Like, what do you mean? I get to choose what I want to do. I'm always told what I have to write my paper about or whatever. So I think it was just that mindset of giving them the freedom and them trusting that they really have that freedom to do that. And like Mr. Clark said, I think that with the kids coming up, and everybody said this, and I know I'm thinking like Leah Partridge right now in sixth grade at MEH. I know I had a conversation with her. And she already said that she has seen such a huge difference with the kids that have come to her from the PYP program that have been in it since kindergarten, that it's day and night, that their mindset and the way they operate in the classroom and the way they work together in collaboration, that I think the eighth graders and the ninth graders who got to see the work of the 10th graders, they already got it. And I saw that change too when I was talking with a bunch of kids during the kickoff. And they were already excited about an idea. And you didn't have to coax them before. It was like, come on, what do you, you like horses? You like cats? Like, come on, you gotta like something, right? But with these kids, they came up and right away they had an idea and they were really, really good ideas. So it's really that communication, making sure the parents understand the purpose of this. And the teachers got it now too because instead even our staff was like, what are we supposed to do? But now we're in a good place. So for a first year, it was actually a pretty good success.
I'll just add one more thing. With the kickoff this year, because we are going into our second year, we had students be able to talk to the rising students who will be doing the personal project. And so they got to hear about how it's going to happen. And then when they came through the groups, I was one of the people who got to have an opportunity to talk to students to ask, you know, what are you considering doing? And they all had more than one topic. And there was one young lady who I talked to and I'm like, oh, whichever one you choose, I want to make sure that I have an opportunity to see what your final result is. And so last week, I received an email from this young lady. She says, you may not remember me, but, you know, we met at the kickoff and you said you were interested in my topics. Will you be my mentor? And for me, that was like, okay. She said, because we connected. And so that tells me that, you know, our students are taking the initiative and are moving forward. And so that was, of course, I immediately sent an email to the principals to say, she wants me? Just because, you know, many people want the chief academic officer, but she wanted me. So I was excited about that. But I think we'll continue to build the program and it'll be, it'll be an exciting thing for our students and our families to see as well as our teachers.
Others?
Can I ask just one more? And then we'll let you guys go home. It's actually for the two of you. And as you guys pass off these duties to somebody new, what advice do you have for them? what advice do you have for them for next year? For, you know, ways we can continue to improve and take it to the next level?
Sure. I think just being in the classrooms as much as possible, whether it's modeling lessons, hopefully it'll be someone with a wealth of experience within PYP. But modeling new ideas and showing, you know, coaching teachers in ways that they can incorporate more and more inquiry into their lessons. Because I think that our planners and our central ideas, and I think the teachers have that part down. We just want to make sure that within, even within the guided reading or within the guided math, that teachers are including as much inquiry as possible into those lessons. So, being in the classrooms as much as possible, seeing what's going on, and then seeing the ways that they can improve their, you know, core instruction, their tier-one core instruction.
So I shouldn't have let Jeremy go first, because that's what I was going to say. No, honestly, I think, you know, I would love to like co-teach with teachers. I would love to be in classrooms with teachers just right alongside of them. And I hope that a full-time PYP coordinator can do that. Because I think, like Jeremy said, modeling best practices and great instruction is really key when it comes to the PYP. I also, I would tell this person, and somebody told me this going in, was like, to really focus on the creativity, right? Like, the planners and the units, they're going to come along, and kind of that teacher collaboration is going to be there, but focus on student creativity. And like, and really push that and give kids a chance to kind of be creative learners and teachers, and give our teachers a chance to do it, too. Because, you know, I think that sometimes our kids, and we kind of see teachers as being robots, right? And like, we don't want that to be the case, right? We want them to kind of use their skills and their creative juices to kind of, you know, make this classroom an amazing place. So, that's what I would say. Yeah.
One last thing from me, just to say. One, we have somebody really great coming in. These two have done a fantastic job to sort of set it, put us on a really great course with the PYP. And the coordinator that is coming in is coming from the Northeast, a school division in the Northeast where she currently serves as an IB coordinator.
NYPD, though.
Or, I'm sorry, NYPD.
I was just nodding.
NYPD, yeah, yeah, yeah. But we're going to have great continuity. But anyway, we're in the process of firing the elementary. The other thing I was just going to say, just very quickly, for those parents out there who might be struggling with the personal project piece, my son is getting ready to do his personal project. He was asked to come home and talk to me about something he was passionate about. And he's decided that his personal project is going to be going to the beach because he said that's what he's really passionate about. So I say that because I'm having to do some coaching, too, at home. And so, hang in there and know that your kids will finally get there, and they'll find, so, a really great topic that they're passionate about. It's a little something more than just going to the beach.
Ms. Roosted, did you have any questions?
Yeah, so I don't know if this really is applicable to you guys, but, you know, when I hear you talk about IB and how, I guess, or NYPD, PYP, that, you know, I guess I would kind of categorize it as a methodology to some extent. How do the academic or educational tools that we use support that? And I guess I'm thinking specifically, when I look at the textbooks, they're obviously not specific to IB. I guess it's hard to kind of balance that out and kind of how those two integrate when the textbooks kind of seem more traditional and, I guess, old-school, when the methodology is obviously much more progressive.
I mean, from a elementary level for the K-1, that's something we really are taking, hopefully taking into account when we look at any adoptions that we're going with the writing program that we adopted, that was really open-ended and gave the teachers a lot of leeway. And I think that has really been a great thing with the Lucy Hawkins Writing Program Unit of Study, and the teachers have really loved it because of that, because it gives them the ability to maneuver within that. And also, within their guided reading, they're able to do that very easily. By, you know, they have a lot of freedom within the guided reading and the questioning and the inquiry, and they can bring in a lot of the themes right into any story that they're reading. So, so far, it's gone well so far.
Yeah, I guess, I'm sorry, I should, I guess I was thinking more about middle school and high school. But, yeah, but I'd love your answer, too.
Well, I would just comment that we do, I mean, obviously, we still use some textbooks. Some courses use them more than others. We, our teachers use a variety of resources and frequently are using, as you know, you know, with the MacBooks and the accessibility to databases and, you know, web resources, that they're constantly bringing things into the classroom that are both relevant and, you know, connected to the curriculum. So, we do still need some of the sort of traditional texts that have been used for a while. But we are also in a process of looking at the cycle of how we adopt materials. And, you know, adopting materials now doesn't mean pick a textbook, right? It means adopting, you know, what are we going to use in the classroom? Sometimes that doesn't even, you know, sometimes that does not include a textbook at all. So, we're looking at how do we sort of evaluate curriculum, evaluate textbook adoptions, and how do we bring our curriculum is sort of more in line with what, you know, is available out there and how kids are learning, how kids are interacting with materials? So, kids are still lugging textbooks around a little bit, but, you know, we're getting there and we're looking to modernize what we're using, so.
Yeah, textbooks is, there's no, that's not the curriculum, right?
Right.
Curriculum is the curriculum, the textbook is a resource. And whether it matches or not, we'll pull from it what's necessary. But there's so many other things out there that many, many school divisions actually aren't even, as Dr. Clark said, aren't even adopting textbooks anymore because there's so many other outstanding resources that are available.
Yeah, I agree. We've moved a lot away from using it. I mean, I remember the day when it was like, chapter one, chapter two. And a lot of our teachers don't do that anymore. It's really just a resource. It's something that they'll refer to, but they use a lot of other materials. Like, Dr. Clark said, whether it's online or whether it's like other things that they've developed themselves. So, for the most part, most of our teachers don't do that chapter-one, chapter-two thing anymore, hopefully.
Sure, hopefully.
Hopefully, I'm saying that.
And I would say we're not. When we're looking at our scope and sequences and looking at this new standards as they come along and creating our curriculum documents, we start with our planners and what we're doing. And then, we're putting in what the standards are that meet those areas. So, and then, it's looking at resources. Even when I'm communicating with, you know, our CTOs to say, it's time for us to look at their standards, I don't say we're going to do a textbook adoption. We're looking at curriculum, looking at resources. It's more of a resource adoption, and a lot of times, it's not a textbook. It's more, I want to use this for this component, and this works for another component. But I would say we are definitely not textbook-driven.
Other questions? Mr. Castillo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question. I know time is always scarce for everybody on planning. So with respect to reflection on top of that, how do you all feel about time availability for teachers and administrators?
I'll go first, yes. So we, that's something that we, it's always scarce, obviously. But we work hard to make sure that teachers have, for example, common planning time blocks, one of two of their planning blocks is with their curricular teams. You know, we ask our teachers to meet during that time. And in addition to the early Wednesdays and professional days that are built into the schedule, provides that opportunity for teachers to work both with their collaborative teams in curricular groups and also vertically with, for example, with the middle school. So having those Wednesdays allows us to connect vertically as opposed to just in our school site. So, we do, we do value that time that we have, and we, some of it is built into our schedule where we make that time available for teams to meet. And some of it is available through the additional professional development times that are built into the schedule. So, we certainly have time, but there's never enough time, obviously, so.
At the elementary level, we, at Mount Daniels specifically, we don't, the teachers with the nine classes don't have common planning during the day. So they rely on those Wednesday afternoons. They, we used to do it where, before I got there, they did it one hour every two weeks. But they found that once they got into a discussion, the hour was over. So they started doing it two hours once a month, rather so they could have a more richer discussion. But I know that next year, the plan is to try and get some common planning within the grade level during the school day as well. So, to build more of that in and talk more about, more of the PLC-type model.
At least one day a week.
And we do have common planning at TJ. And we also have, our teachers meet once a week from nine to 10 as collaborative teams to discuss math instruction, math data, reading, PYP, our MTSS program. So, I would say that our teachers, they take advantage of that time. And our specialists are great about kind of coming in and having kind of deliberate work to kind of get through that, that we feel like is really, really necessary, so.
Okay, and I have a huge list of questions, but I won't ask them. But just, the one interesting question to me is, and I appreciate your honest thoughts, what does an IB school board look like? What should we be doing to act, to walk the walk?
Really need you to critically think.
Why do you say that?
Please inquire.
Board-driven questions. Ask open-ended questions.
And reflect.
I would say, on a serious note, though, we talk about sometimes the juxtaposition of the standards and accountability movement with the IB, and that they're at odds at times. And we strive to really focus on what we think is important, which is the IB sort of foundation inquiry, developing these lifelong learners. So, I don't know, if there's anything, I would say that, you know, we do kind of talk about that often, and it does strike us as sometimes at odds. But, maybe that's just my opinion, I don't know.
But I think that'd be a good area to explore. I think we probably should do things differently. I don't know what they are. Thank you all for coming out tonight.
Other questions?
Well, thank you all for coming out tonight, too. It definitely is good to hear about the whole spectrum that we have of the IB program. On my end, we were working higher ed. Where I currently work at, they accepted dual enrollment and AP credits only. And then, this past year, I did make the point to say, well, you know, I work in a school, I'm chair of a school board in the division that is IB and has a great IB program. And it makes it difficult for me to recommend kids to apply this to where I'm working at because you won't, I have so many kids who are potentially doing the IB diploma, and they're going to come here and not get any of the credit for the hard work that they did. So we're going to be instituted that come next year. So it's definitely, you know, in a testament of me seeing how the program works. And definitely, I think by starting at the younger kid, it makes it more palatable to more kids being open to it versus when you get to the high school level, then jumping into it because it does, it can be a bit of a shock for some kids that aren't used to necessarily that level of critical thinking that comes with the IB program. And if it's kind of starting at the pre-K on through, it gives them that, okay, this is something that's, oh, this is second nature to me now to go into the full diploma program versus just taking classes. But I do appreciate also that we do meet kids where they are of having the IB, the AP, dual enrollment course. Because kids all learn very differently. And the AP may be the best option for some kids, and we're potentially working in dual enrollment maybe for some others. But having all the options out there for them, I think, is a great thing that we have. And I really appreciate it, what you all do on a daily basis. Thank you all for carrying the water for the last couple of years of doing this as we bring someone to focus fully on this.
The cake was for us, right?
Yes, the cake was for you. But I really appreciate what you all do. And Messiah, of course, thank you for all, for leading such a good team and great team of folks there.
They make me look good.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
We're going to move on to the safety and security, national best practices. And, again, Dr. Noonan introduced, and then have Ms. Michaels and Mr. Padilla kind of.
Thank you. I feel like I've misspoken a couple of times tonight. This actually is the second in the series of three around school safety, and the next one around best practices and supporting students. Tonight, Mr. Padilla is here, and he is going to speak specifically around some of those national best practices that are out there. 2.03 and 2.04 kind of bleed together a little bit because part of what we know around school safety and security is that the best practices also include the social and emotional wellness of our students. So, you'll hear sort of some interplay between 2.03 and 2.04. But at this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Michael, our chief operating officer, for more detail.
So, thank you for the opportunity this evening to really look at best practices in school safety and security. So as Dr. Noonan indicated, at the last meeting, we really talked about what we do for school safety, both in terms of exterior and interior safety. We also talked about the communication, internal and external. So tonight, Mr. Padilla is going to go through what are the best practices? Best practices that both we've researched in terms of the state and also the best practices we've seen in place as we've been out doing school visits. And then, the information from our last presentation and tonight will really help inform the presentation that we give to you in June, where we'll really go through and make recommendations based on what we've seen in terms of what we could improve for our school safety. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Padilla.
Hello, so I am here to present the best practices for safety and security in our school buildings. So, the Virginia Department of Ed, I'll only get to the next one. Sorry, I'm using two different things. Virginia Department of Education has, cites five major categories for the best practices for maintaining a safe and, is it good? Safe and secure school building. And they are prevention, protection, mitigation, response, and recovery. And as we discuss these five categories in more detail, I think it's important to note that these topics kind of go hand-in-hand with what our professional staff are going to talk about after me. So, I might touch on a couple of topics, but they're going to, they'll go into more detail about it. So the first category is prevention, which are the actions taken to prevent an emergency from occurring. The first step is to intervene before the incident occurs. And the State of Virginia Code actually requires that all school divisions establish a threat assessment team. And this team is led by a broad range of school staff and administrators to help identify at-risk youth. It's also very important that we develop and maintain a close collaboration with our police and emergency responders. And this includes utilizing the principles of like, see something, say something, to report suspicious activities and behaviors. And then, we also want to empower our staff to initiate disengagement activities that can help dissuade youth from dangerous paths. We can do this by embracing diversity in our school programming and having positive daily interactions with at-risk students and working to eliminate cultural stigmas and tolerance and prejudice in our schools. And as we continue with prevention, the best practices also recommend establishing focus groups to discuss bullying, gangs, even violent extremism. And this can be part of a larger community discussion with police and school staff and parents. So we also want to focus on after-school programs. After-school programs and activities that can promote inclusion and build self-confidence. And they help, we can help identify youth employment opportunities for, to advance workforce skills and allows less idle time to engage in other activities. And there are also other resources provided by the Virginia Center for School Safety or School and Campus Safety via the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, DCJS. And they help us with training our stakeholders, developing, reviewing, disseminating resources and legislation down to the school divisions, and facilitating the annual school safety audit that's required by DCJS. And they also help us developing partnerships between our state and our local jurisdictions. The next category for safe and secure schools is protection. And that's the steps taken to secure schools against man-made or natural disasters or acts of violence. And so, you know, hardening of infrastructure is one big example. So making sure our doors and windows are secure and maintaining our security systems, such as the fire and burglary alarm systems and panic buttons that we have. And then continual maintenance of our, and upgrades of our camera and access control systems. But it also entails our security staff and the training that they get. So the annual evaluation of their emergency training and to where we staff them, how many we have at each school. And then also the cross-coordination between police and the school-based security teams. Our next category is mitigation. So that's the actions taken to eliminate or reduce the loss of property or life by lessening the impact of an emergency. And I think this is where we want to really utilize the threat assessment teams and to identify possible threats before they happen. And there's sort of two types of threat assessment teams in my mind. There's sort of the internal school-based threat assessment team that's going to deal with a lot of the social, emotional well-being of the students. And that's the admins and the counselors, providing those resources to the students and the teachers, as well as the central office kind of providing that extra layer down to those staff members. But there's also the police and the school-based teams that are going to have to intervene should there be a criminal act that takes place. And when those, when it, when that does happen, it's important that we maintain that close partnership with our state, federal, and state law enforcement. And police can also provide training and resources to the school division as we're going through all of that. The next category is response. And these are the steps taken to stabilize an emergency once it has occurred. And the big part of that is going to be communication. So the communication between our parents, our staff, our students, and the greater community. And I think, and the close partnerships that we're going to have with our school and city PIOs, which are the Public Information Officers, for a unified message. And I think it's very important that we have a unified. And I think it's very important that we have a unified message when we're managing that response. We want to ensure that we're not giving the wrong information to the public, but also at the same time, we're not giving too much information that could, that could hinder an investigation by the police, whatever it may be. And then also just building on reunification plans after the emergency. If we had to evacuate the school, where are our kids and how do we, how do we locate them and, and put them back with their parents? And then there's multiple methods of responses. So, historically in our schools, we've done lockdowns. That sort, that trend is sort of going away, and that's not really, not really recommended any longer. So, we'll be changing things. And the big part now is evacuation, evacuation, evacuation of our schools and not locking down. So, the new trainings now, they're going towards ALICE, which is alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate. And these are the recommended best practice, sort of the gold standard in our region nationally, including with the local city of Falls Church Police. And it sort of teaches the staff and students in the community to participate in their own survival while leading others to safety. And the city has actually trained its general government staff on this and are looking to train the school staff as well. The, kind of the controversial topic of ALICE or even the old run, hide, fight is sort of that, that fight mentality that you're, you're telling kids or staff members that that's an option. But that's kind of where everything is going. So, I think it's about empowering the principals, the teachers, the students, that they've got multiple options during an emergency. And ALICE sort of provide, provides those options to us. And the final category is recovery. So, that's the actions taken to restore the learning environment. The city does have a continuity of operations plan, our COOP. And so, we just want to work better with our, our city coordinating those, that COOP plan with the schools. The schools are part of it, but we haven't played a big role in it. But then also, you know, how do we activate all of our emergency contracts as needed? The city has a lot of emergency contracts in place that we can utilize that the state, if it was a building emergency, tornado, whatever it may be. And then also kind of the annual reviews of our insurance carriers and coverage and services they provide during an emergency and their very robust services that they can provide to us. But also the activation of a crisis, crisis and response team for the emotional and physical recovery, which the other group will talk about. And then sort of planning and preparing for that long-term recovery process if it was, if it was an active shooter or if a building, tornado, you know, took out a building or something. The final part I have is just more of the best practices in action. And these are sort of items that we've seen as we've visited neighboring schools. Part of it is physical security. So, you know, the trend is going toward more secure vestibules for when visitors enter the building, to restricting the access and for visitors before they can even get inside. And then emergency events. So, having centralized automatic lockdown of interior doors via like a secure key or a central button that can be pushed to lock down, you know, wings or zones or pods. So, the intruders or whatever the, whatever it may be, they can't get to where our kids are. But also sort of designing our new buildings with emergency egress in mind and not more of, not necessarily lock down. So, make sure that, you know, the emergency egress points are in a place where, once we maybe push that button or use that key and lock that area down, the kids can immediately exit the building in a safe manner. And that's it? That's where I?
So, do we want to continue and go straight into the social, emotional, or do we want to pause and ask questions here regarding some of these security best practices, both from the Virginia Department of Education and what we've seen as we've visited other school sites?
All right, good evening. We are here to talk to you guys this evening about how we address social, emotional learning and what does that mean, and how we build systems of support to help students with those areas. And I have Summer Manos with me this evening. She's our MTSS coordinator. And then I have Alana Reyes, who's with us this evening. She's our director of counseling. And I'm Rebecca Sharp. I got to come back. I was with you last week, and I'm back again. So, I'm the new director of special education and student services. And we really are going to take a couple of minutes to review some of the national trends and best practices that you'll see in terms of social, emotional learning. And just like the previous presentation said, social, emotional learning really is about preventing crises from happening. Do we have strong supports in place for students to make sure that we don't get to the point where we need to have the kind of high-level interventions that, that we've seen have to be implemented in schools here lately? So, I'm going to turn it over to Summer.
So, before we get started, we just wanted to tie it back to our priorities and the triennial plan. And so, highlighting best practice for social, emotional learning for you tonight does fall under priority one, student-centered teaching and learning, as well as the following three strategies.
So, one of the most important things to understand about social, emotional learning is the difference between social, emotional learning and mental health. And not to be contrite, but just, we have to differentiate because social, emotional learning and teaching is what we can do in the schools. Mental health needs are what we deal with in the schools, but also what cross over into every part of a student's life. And so, we can do the social, emotional teaching and learning for everyone in the classroom, but we also need to think about the mental health needs of our students and what they're coming into. And so, this is just, we wanted to share with you because we talk a lot about where the trends are going and what that means for us and how we start addressing the mental health needs in our, in our buildings. But this is the latest numbers from NAMI, and I thought it was important and how it translates to our population. If 20% of youth 13 through 18 are living with a diagnosed mental health condition, and I think that is the first thing we need to look at, it's diagnosed. It's been recognized by a clinician and reported back. Think about all the kids that aren't diagnosed. That translates into about 287 of our ME, of our Henderson and George Mason kids. And that's a significant part of our population. Those living with a mood disorder, that's about 158 of our students, sixth through 12. Those living with a behavior or conduct disorder could be 143 of our sixth through 12th graders. And those living with a diagnosed anxiety disorder could be about 115 of our sixth through 12th graders. And when you look at our numbers, again, we're talking about diagnosis, and this, this takes into account the entire country when we look at rates in Northern Virginia and the DC metropolitan area, they are much higher. And I thought this was a really interesting fact, that one half of all chronic mental illness develops at the age of 14 and three-quarters by the age of 24. And they say it, being at risk for a mental health illness in first grade leads to a 5% drop in academic performance in two years. So, a lot of times we hear, why do we need to focus on the mental health? That needs to be taken care of outside of school. In school, we need to focus on academics. And obviously, we know that's kind of an old, old-school way of thinking, and we've become more progressive than that. But if we don't address our students' social, emotional, and mental health needs in our buildings, they are not going to be academically performing up to the level that they are capable of. And one of the things we didn't really touch on in this presentation, but when you look at national best practice, we're talking about social, emotional learning here. But I think as a district, we also need to look at how we're treating our students. And one of the ways, one important national best practice is trauma-informed care that we will begin talking about, not in this presentation, but needs to continue to be a conversation we have as a district. Oh, this is so me. Okay. So, what does this look like? This is a little bit of what we talked about in our last presentation. We have a significant number, I'm not going to read it to you, of students that are living with really significant issues. And what that's creating is students that are not organized and focused. They're the students that are struggling. Or, again, I like to look at it as the students that are not living up to their potential. That really, and struggling is a variety of ways. We have a lot of students that are also internally struggling, externally in the building, they manage to hold it all together. But what have we done to prevent them from struggling at home and for them to be able to relate to that, us in our buildings, what they need? Our, you know, school refusal rates have gone up. Truancy has been an issue for students that are really just avoiding, not because they don't want to be in school. A lot of them want to be in school. They're just not able to be in school because of a variety of mental health barriers that get in their way.
All right. So, when we start looking at these mental health issues and then how they manifest in schools in terms of behavior with students, and we started exploring the best practices, this, I don't know if you've seen this before, but when kids don't know how to read, what do we do? We teach. When kids don't know how to multiply, you know, we can, we can teach that. And if our kids don't know how to drive, we can teach that. But when we have children who, you know, don't know how to behave, what happens? They end, we end up punishing. And so, bringing social, emotional learning to the table says we think differently about that and that we know that we can help our students and we can support them with instructional models. And that's what we're going to talk about next. What does social, emotional learning really look like? Because it comes from the stance that just like you can learn how to read and add and subtract and drive a car and swim, you can learn how to behave if, and when we provide you with good, strong instruction in those skills. And the best practice, when we start talking about social, emotional learning, comes from the Collaborative for Academic and Social, Emotional Learning, which is Castle. It's a wonderful website if you have some time this evening before you go to sleep and you want to read, you want to visit it. It's a great place to go. But really, it, it really kind of operationalizes out the best practices for how do we teach kids these social, emotional skills that they need to be successful, you know, really in life, not just in school, but in, you know, in their community and for their futures? And there's a process to that. And that's what we're here to talk about, about with you next, is if we know these are the skills that they need, because if you look at that model, it breaks it down into, we have to teach, teach kids self-awareness skills, that we have to teach kids self-regulation and self-management, because I don't, you know, I don't always develop that naturally. Those are things that'll have to be taught. And we have to teach skills, you know, teach kids how to build relationships. And what do you do when you're struggling with a relationship? So, that we don't see, you know, that it doesn't manifest in some of the more negative behaviors that we, you know, tend to see in, in some of our kids. So, if we know what we're going to teach, the next thing we have to address really is how we're going to teach that. And the how, you know, is, is through a tiered approach. And I don't know how many of you have seen the pyramid before, but this one's been around a little while, and there's a...
Summer's like, please say everybody.
Everyone heads on, yes.
We are familiar with a tiered system.
Okay. So, what we looked at is Virginia's tiered system of supports. And it really has, really has morphed in from that MTSS, which is that multi-tiered system of supports, and looking at how are we addressing behaviors and how are we addressing the needs of all of our students and that we're putting structures and supports in place? Because as you move up that pyramid, your interventions, your supports get more intensive, and the numbers of kids that, that need those kinds of interventions get smaller as well. That's the, the whole concept behind the pyramid. And when we talk about tiers, what does that look like in terms of social, emotional learning and behavioral supports for kids in schools? When we talk about each of those tiers, it, as we move up, we're changing group size. We're changing frequency of services. The duration of services changes. So, tier one really is, this is what we have available for all kids. Every student that is in our school system has access to tier one support strategies, that it's core programming that we're providing to our students in terms of, we have school-wide behavior expectations. You know, a lot of our classrooms have morning meetings that is a part of, you know, the way to build culture and climate in their school. There's social skills lessons being taught. And there's classroom guidance lessons that where counselors are providing those. So, that's there, that's available to all kids. That's our first layer of preventative support strategies. And then we have some students who, you know, are going to need some additional support. So, what does that look like for those kids, for those, for the, for some of our students? They're going to need all the, everything we've got in tier one, plus they're going to need some supports in tier two, which might look like those kids might, you know, need a small group counseling session. They might need a targeted social skills lesson. So, instead of just the lessons that we're doing in class, which really are more broad-based lessons, those kids might need some very targeted, specific skills. It could be that Summer's having trouble, you know, making friends, and so, Summer needs me to do a special lesson with, with her on friendship-making skills so that she can be more successful, because she's getting frustrated because, you know, she's sitting alone at the caf, in the cafeteria, and so, we don't want that for her. And then we have a few of our students who might need more intensive support. So, they're getting everything with tier one, and we're giving them supports with tier two strategies, but that's still not enough. We might need to individualize just a bit more for that student, and that might, those, that's, those are a few of our students. And those are the kids who are getting more intensive supports, like individual counseling. They maybe have an individualized behavior contract, or that we're connecting them with community supports, like outside counseling or, you know, home support services. Or that student might have a, you know, a daily check and connect with a mentor, somebody there in the school that's checking in with them to see how their day has gone and make sure that they're staying on track. So, when you look at what the research tells us our best practices are, one, the, what we're teaching are those really strong social, emotional skills. And the how we're, we're providing those supports and the how we're teaching it really is that tiered process. And so, Summer's going to show you an example of this in two students and what it would look like for two of our students.
If I could also just tie it back quickly, when Steffi mentioned prevention as part of his process for best practices, tier one is prevention. That's exactly what it is. And so, it really does, I'm glad we got to just flow right through because they do integrate, really, it's an important integration that we're all on the same page, knowing what the outcome needs to be.
So, we wanted to drill down to really a student level as far as what best practice would look like in a school based on student need. So, we did a sample student A. So, Sally is a student who is new to any elementary school. She sits alone, she sounds kind of like me, in the cafeteria, and she plays alone at recess. She does not like to work in small groups in her class. She might refuse to interact with others and experiences a great deal of anxiety that's causing her to struggle more than expected. So, for a student with this profile, again, looking at that pyramid and how strategies are available at all different tiers of the pyramid, we see tier one supports that would be put in place to support her would be those school-wide behavioral expectations, peer buddy in a classroom, mindfulness activities or brain breaks for anxiety in the classroom with the classroom teacher might be some tier one, again, kind of best practice for those supports and strategies for her. And then based on her needs and using the problem-solving model, because collaborative problem-solving would be taking place in order to make sure that her interventions and these strategies are targeted to her needs, then she might receive small group intervention with the counselor for social skills. So, that might be the right amount of supports for her in order to meet her needs based on best practice for social, emotional learning. And so, then another sample student, let's call him John, is a student with a significant frustration and anger issues. He oftentimes might lash out at his peers in and out of the classroom when he's frustrated. He doesn't like to be called on in class, refuses to work, calls others names, and leaves class when he is upset. So, based on those behaviors that he's using, again, some intervention strategies and supports that would be put in place for him at tier one might be, again, those school-wide behavior expectations, wait time in the classroom, alternate response options, and brain breaks. Those are, those good preventative instructional techniques that we would use with all of our students. And then he would need and benefit from supervised study in small groups two times per week, and perhaps a check-and-connect mentor. So, someone that he can establish a relationship with, who's talking to him about, how are things going? How was your day? You know, what happened when you were frustrated? And then a tier three strategy would be individualized social skill instruction. So, that really ties back to what Rebecca was describing, as far as really ensuring that we're providing students instruction in what it is that we want them to know and be able to do when they're in our schools and in our classrooms. And so, that would be that tier three support where it's very individualized, and there might be a behavior contract in place for a student in order to ensure that that student knows what behaviors they're working on, and all of the teachers that he works with would have access to that.
So, our philosophy and the national model is for every student to feel included and supported and successful. And when we started looking at this, all means all. So, that means that this is an inclusive model, that it includes our ESOL students, it includes our students from poverty, includes our special education students, and making sure that we really are collaborating together to meet the needs of all of our students. Because it's not just isolate, these issues aren't just isolated to one specific population. There's not one specific solution. It's when we all come together. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Do we have any questions for, for our folks?
I had a question for, well, as part of Sevvy's presentation, I don't see it here. Sevvy had to leave, but I will definitely try to answer.
Thank you. It was, and I'm sure a lot of people picked up on the, the Alice model, the, the fight. And so is this coming from the state of Virginia? That we're getting that guidance? And what do they mean by fight? And what do they mean by harming educator? Or I don't think it's that word, but no. So I just, I just want to get more clarity, just because I think this would be a question that comes up quite a bit.
Correct. And that's an absolutely excellent question that we really do want to highlight. When you look at Virginia, they publish a lot of resources on their website, right? And many of them, when you look at the Run, Hide, Fight model, has kind of fallen behind what you see going on in best practices. So when Sevvy and I were at the Region Four meeting with all of the other school systems in the surrounding area, some of the feedback we got from them was Alice is really what they're using, right? And becoming much more of a best practice. So when you think of that fight component, whether you're hearing Alice or Run, Hide, Fight, they certainly don't mean army teachers are having weapons, right? That, that's not at all what they mean. But they talked about, when you look at in the past, when, when you told students to lock down in a classroom, right? Students just went in the classroom and kind of like hid under their desks, right? But what can you do to kind of like either fight or barricade or do things to protect yourself? So if you have a large file cabinet or a bookcase that's right by the door, can you barricade the door? If somebody comes in and you have all the students cowered under the desk and there's nothing in between, right? They're easy targets. But what can you do in terms of distraction, right? When you look at, you know, shooters for police, for example, it's hard to shoot your target. But when students are sitting there still, right, they're a much easier target. So fighting back could be moving, you know, throwing something that's a distraction, maybe a book, you know, doing other components. So it's not like necessarily physically attacking. It could be a variety of things. Right? And you have heard that pale of rocks in the news, but another example might be, you know, textbooks, for example. What other things can you do to distract, to disarm, you know, to try to throw them off balance?
Thank you.
Those are absolute last, last options, of course.
Sure. Thanks.
Our leadership team, by the way, just, we, we had a presentation from Tom Polara, who came and spoke to us about the Alice training that he's been doing with the city of Falls Church General Government and also what they've been doing. And he had some pretty compelling stories from the field around sort of the benefits of that model versus the shelter in place model. And, and that sort of resonated with us, which precipitated sort of this conversation, not only that we're having, but sort of internally around what are some of those best practices too. And I think as we continue to look at designs of our, our new building that we're putting together and figuring out ways to develop safety protocols to cordon off areas, to be able to utilize the physical, physical structure itself to support that and then have some other backend function also can be really useful.
Can I also add, you know, I think those of us that were trained in this type of situation, we, we lock down. That's comfort, it's what we know and we feel we can, we know how to utilize that, that support for our students. I went to recently a Virginia criminal justice seminar, but it's completely butchered their name. But in hearing what they said in terms of compelling reasons, you know, we always say our student safety and security is our number one priority when they come into our building. And when I started to hear more and more about what other districts are doing and what protocol there's, they're leaning towards, it made me feel like, are we doing what's best for our students right now by utilizing an old model? And I don't know, I really, there are many compelling reasons to look into why this might be best for us as a district.
Other questions?
Just to follow up on, on that, it seems like one of the big problems is knowing what's going on during an event. And it's very difficult. I, it was seen to me, if you don't know what's going on and you're in a safe place, probably that's the right thing to do. So how, are, are we looking to, to develop ways to give a better sense of what's going on in a particular situation? Because if you don't know that, then I think it's hard to do anything.
No, I think, I think it's an excellent point. One of the things that we've seen in terms of best practices that maybe wasn't as clear in this as we could have made it, but as part of the process of the Alice training and some of the infrastructure that we have in place, for example, we can turn our video cameras over to the police from inside of our building. So the police will know where people are and can monitor that and can give direction to someone in our building that says, okay, those students that are in the cafeteria hall, please move out immediately. And then, and then teachers know that that, in, in those best practices, that teachers know, okay, that means it's safe for me to move out of this area, because the active shooter, if, if it is an active shooter situation, isn't there. The other thing that they, they talk about are very clear, providing very clear understandings of how to identify areas in a school, like the blue hallway or the orange, or hallway one, or hallway two, or hallway three, so that when there is a circumstance that requires immediate evacuation while giving direction through cameras and visuals, it makes it much clearer for teachers to understand. So all of that to say that one of the best practices is having that video system in the building that can identify where people are in real time, so that you can direct people in and out of the building accordingly. And I think that was one of the, the lessons learned, and, you know, I don't want to get too deep into this, but one of the lessons learned in the Columbine circumstance was that there were students that had sheltered in place 20 feet from a door and the, and the two shooters that were in the building were on the other side of the building. And all they heard were the shooters getting closer, 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 and never, never left the building. And ultimately, those, those students were harmed in that circumstance. So with that video, to be able to say, if you're in the cafeteria, get out, move through the door, out the cafeteria, that begins to eliminate some of that threat. Other questions?
So I guess my question would be, so with, as we kind of move through the process of our design for the new building, is this going to be one of the, the main kind of areas that, that whomever we end up with, the design and building, we'll be looking at as with, as a group?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a great question. You know, again, just to sort of reframe tonight, tonight was just about sort of best practice that are out there. Next time Sevvy comes and, and Alana and Summer and Rebecca come, they'll talk about, what are we going to do moving forward? But that, that aside, yes, when we look at our new building, one of the things that we observed in our travels over the last day, when we were there on Friday cruising around Northern Virginia, all over God's green earth, were looking, looking at what were those safety and security protocols? And some of the things we saw that were highlighted, secure vestibules. You can't get in, you open the door and you can't go any further. And in some cases, there's a security person in the vestibule. There are ways that remotely you can shut down areas of the building. So you can say, we're locking, we're, we're locking off hallway one. And those magnetized doors close and nobody can get in. You can get out, but you can't get in, or you can go out the back way. So there were a number of things that we looked at from a safety and security perspective that will be part of the design, for sure.
And then what, where we currently are with the current George Mason, has an assessment been done of potentially looking at possible blind spots within buildings of the cameras that we, we currently have? Is there a need to potentially look at and potentially invest in others? Not only George Mason, but other buildings as well?
So the other two components that will blend into our recommendations next time is we asked Securitas, our security provider, to give us an assessment of our sites and give us feedback on where they believe we can improve. And then we also had TSA, the Transportation Safety Administration here, to help us in terms of our transportation and anything we can do. So both of those reviews will factor into the information that we present next time.
Mr. Castillo?
Just a, thank you, Mr. Taylor, just to follow up on that. I mean, some of these things that you're talking about, Dr. Noonan, I think we have a ready model for security. And frankly, it's a prison. It sounds to me very much like a compartmentalized place. I, in a former life was at the Supermax in Florence, Colorado. So I've seen some, some very secure places. I, I'd just like to get your thoughts as professionals in the emotional wellbeing of our children. There's discussion of the impact of gun violence on students who've been in those particular schools, but it seems all students now, if they're talking about things like this and in an environment like this, are going to be affected. And what are your thoughts about that?
You know, so what we talk about in trauma-informed care is that everyone experiences a situation differently. And so when you and I watch a school shooting, like we did in Parkland on TV, I have an incredibly visceral reaction. I did not grow up in an age the Columbine was long, I was after, I was out of school. And so for me, it's horrific. I, I, I struggle, I perseverate on it, I think about how it can affect us and what we can do better. Our kids have grown up in an age of experiencing this. And while I, I don't think we can generalize how they see this, because I will say, like an example, I've talked to students about, their school shooting memes rampant, they're on our kids' Instagram pages, they share them like candy, because they joke about it, because it's a normal part of their everyday life that they talk about. And so for us to say how it affects them, it's part of their, it's part of their, their DNA at this point, in my opinion. And so we really have to look at how we are treating all of this differently than the way you and I view that. That's kind of just how I see it. Yeah, that's, but also with trauma-informed care, how we all experience something, I think we need to look at everything with kid gloves. So trauma-informed cares, you know, when we, when we talk to a kid, when we talk to a group, we need to handle it, thinking about all the potential things that can be going on in their heads in the room. And again, kid gloves, making sure we're accommodating everyone's needs and not potentially ramping somebody up. And so if we did try, we did go to more secure things, we, we have to handle things with our highest, with our lowest, it's a terrible way to put it, with our highest needs kids in mind, so we're not escalating anyone, the best we can.
When we went to visit with our peers in Region Four, so all the other school districts in this region, one of the things we really talked about with all of those jurisdictions is how do we ensure that students are safe from a physical environment, but keeping in mind their mental health and wellbeing and how they perceive the acts that we're doing? Right? Some of the things we talked about is, you, you talked about a prison being a secure environment. Well, we were talking with another individual from a school system that has a newer school that has glass classroom walls, for example. And he really talked about interacting with the students who had been at that school and then had went back to a more traditional high school. And he actually talked about having greater visibility and some of these things actually made students feel safer, right? So I think as we move forward and look at these, we really do want to look at, you know, what is the combined impact of the physical things that we do? And also then how are we combining that with the social emotional supports, right? And, and really recognizing that, you know, sometimes things like greater visibility can increase students' feelings of safety. So we just want to be mindful of that as we, you know, work through developing the new high school.
I think there's another component, just to sort of also keep our head on, and that is that there, there is a community of people out there that believe we should put in metal detectors and run a school that looks much more like a prison than a school. And the truth is that in prisons, and this is where the analogy for me breaks down, is in prisons, the people that are put in prisons have done something horrific and aren't from the community that they're in. And nobody in that community in the prison knows them as individuals and has been able to build relationships with those inmates in the way that we built, our children are not inmates. Our, our kids, our kids that we, we've known since they were little kids, growing up, building relationships, knowing them and the ways that they act, and are able to observe behaviors that in, in many cases are precursors to really negative behavior and are able to provide that intervention early for kids. And so as we build this new building, one of the things that I want to really be cautious about and thoughtful about is building it in a way that it's safe and secure, but it's also open and welcoming. And I think that there's a, there's a needle to thread there, but I really believe that we, we can do it in a way that's meaningful for our community, but also great for our kids. And I just want to kind of put that out there also. Other questions?
Just on that piece of the conversation, kind of a little like of Justin's analogy of the Superman. During my eight years serving on the Correctional Education Board, I was in and out of a lot of places and that's the last thing I want to have, to have that type of setup here. And I get it, it's, it's a lot going on and it's kind of shocking that, to hear what you just said about the memes that, but you're right, that kids today have grown up in, and have become a part of their, their culture, that they're, it, it happens what has been 10 or 15 this year and it's only, we're at May. So it's a very different world from when all of us were, were in high school, where you just, it didn't happen until Columbine was the first time you ever heard something like that happen. And then there was a, a window of not hearing much about it and then it just seems like it happens more and more now. Yeah, I'm a hundred percent of taking all these safety needs short of, unless it's an absolute have to of metal detectors in schools. When we did one of the visits, looking initially on the early on of going, looking at, which now is Blue High School in DC, they had the stuff set in place where metal detectors were going to be at within the building. And, you know, that was something that, I'm in enough urban school districts, I, I get it, it's a little different than here. But having grown up in rural school districts and, and here in Falls Church, it's just still something that you're just not used to unless it's an absolute must. And, and I think there are a lot of ways to try to, to handle and address the safety in the buildings before you get to that point. And I think hearing at least some of the, the things we talked about now, and I'm looking forward to the suggestions that'll come back at our next work session in June to kind of see where we are of making sure that, putting some of the best practices in place that may, through the different evaluations that folks are doing and see what, what we can do to make sure that our, our buildings, our staff and students are all in a safe environment and they feel safe and secure in those environments. So if there are no other questions, we will move on. Thank you all very much for, for your presentations this evening.
So next, we're at the monthly budget status report. Ms. Michael?
Yes, so thank you so much. This evening, we are presenting the April monthly budget report. Again, we hope every single month that you'll see this as an enhancement from what we've presented the prior month. And I really want to thank Michelle Koppick, who's here tonight, our Director of Budget, for all of her hard work on this effort for this evening. So what you'll see on the first page is just as we've done every month, we have that revenue and expenditure summary that has what is the revised budget, what was our actual to date, any encumbrances, which are purchase orders that we've created, what the available budget is, and then what percentage remains, right? And the other component that the board had requested was that we provide that projection of where we think we're going to be at year end. So that's that box off to the right. And I'll, and I'll walk through each of those assumptions. So we've now included that in this report. And then hopefully, as we're developing this knowledge and go through, next year, as we work through the budget every month, we'll have a much better understanding. First off, we have a better understanding of how the budget was developed and then we'll increase our accuracy in terms of what our projections are for that ending balance. So overall, if we look at our current position, our revenue variance is really significantly impacted by the timing of when we post transactions. You'll certainly see that on the chart on page two. If we just flip to that just for a moment, you can see the variances between each of the years and the color bar chart on the bottom for revenue are really significant. And it has a lot to do with when transactions are posted. So for example, the city transfer has been posted at different points in the years. So that variance, I think, is, is very difficult to use when looking at that comparison. But when we look at our expenditure trends, one of the things that you see is our expenditure trends are tracking very significantly similarly to the prior two years. So when you look at our expenditure trends right now, we're tracking at having about, you know, 29 to 30% available, so very consistently year over year. So when you look at that overall projected balance on the first page, what does that translate into? So overall, when we look at it, we are projecting that our expenditures will be less than budgeted and that our revenue is also going to be less than budgeted. So I'll talk about each of those in a little bit more detail as we go through. And then I'm going to loop back to what does that mean overall? So when we look at our revenue and where those shortfalls are coming, we see a shortfall in revenue for both our state aid and sales tax, right? And those are really largely impacted by our total student enrollment. So our state aid originally was budgeted on our projected growth budgeted on our projected growth for this year that didn't materialize. So that's why our state aid funding is lower. And then when you look at sales tax funding, that's also impacted by enrollment, because sales tax is allocated to school districts across the division. Based on their total enrollment determines what percentage of the statewide sales tax collected goes to the school district. So when you look at the revenue variances, those are the two places where we have a significant revenue variance, and we're projecting that we're going to be short about $600,000 in revenue. Then when you look at our expenditures on our expenditure side, we're also projecting that we're going to underspend in terms of our salaries by about 1.2 million. We're much, much closer in terms of our benefits, we're only about $150,000. And then our other accounts, we believe our other expenditures are going to be very, very tight. So we also have a category in our budget called contingencies. That's additional reserves for additional revenues that we receive, our expenditure contingencies. And, and in this projection of what's available at year-end, right, we are projecting that we won't have utilized that funding. So when you look at the combination of both of those together, we're projecting at year-end that we're going to have about 1.3, 1.4 million dollars available, right? I know that sounds like a lot of money, but I believe it's also really consistent with when we look at where we were at in previous years, because we're really spending at a similar level. So I think in prior years, my assumption is that that funding was used to meet other expenditure needs, right? And a perfect example of that, to me, is really kind of twofold, right? We know we have a beginning balance requirement. This year, our budget used $574,000 in beginning balance funding, and our budget for next year relies on $450,000, right? So that savings or unspent money from year-end has been really being used to help us balance the next year's budget, right? And that's really consistent when we look at that. And this year's really trending consistently to the year before. Secondly, when you look at our funding needs at year-end, right, we have funding for Mount Daniel that's required. When the Mount Daniel project was initiated, it didn't have any funding for what's called FFNE, which is furniture, fixtures, and equipment, right? And my assumption is that while that wasn't built into that project cost at all, right, they must have assumed that they would have some savings in terms of our budget accounts that could be used to address that funding. So we know we have some kind of significant funding requirements that we're going to need for Mount Daniel. So we need things like furniture, fixture, and equipment. So when we look at having new space that we don't have in our current space, right, we didn't include in that project budget any funding for that, those things. So a great example in my mind is the library. Right, we're going to have a new library, but that project budget, because it didn't include FFNE, there's no funding for library tables or chairs, for example. And we know that that space will need, you know, tables and chairs, right? Other examples are clinic space, office space, the new classroom for the Spanish teacher, right? So we really have that kind of significant need for FFNE. We also know as part of that project that we also need to do things across the building as a whole. So some good examples of that are door badge access and keying of the doors, right? We need those systems to be updated together, both the old and the new space, in order to ensure the most safe and secure environment and easy access. So there's additional expenditures that we'll have to pay for there, right, as well as carpeting and painting the existing space to kind of tie the two spaces together. And when you look at that building, you really know that those classrooms need carpeting, right, and paint. And then related to that is our oldest classrooms in that building have bathrooms that are not ADA accessible, right? So as we're updating this building, it's really the perfect time to make that adjustment. But again, that would require additional funding. So when we look at all of those items, we know we have that significant need at year-end. So while we're projecting having an ending balance, I really do believe that when we look at all of these needs for the Mount Daniel project, as well as ensuring that we're not using up all of our ending balance, we're really well situated as we move into our FY19 budget. I also want to mention that when we look at our FY19 budget, and we're seeing this variance in salaries, right, we will not have this variance next year, right? When the budget process was developed, they went through and looked at every single individual employee and what their current salary was. And they reduced the salary budget to that level, and then they applied the 3% cost of living adjustment. So any of this excess or flexibility that, that exists in the salary file, we don't anticipate to continue to occur, right? We'll want to watch if we have any savings from turnover, but it's certainly not going to be at this level. So that's really kind of our overall projection in terms of year-end. In this report, in addition to the chart on the first page that projects ending balance, on page two, we have the three-year trends, on both at the top in a graphic form or a chart form, and in the bottom in a graphic. And then there's all the narrative that I just kind of walked through, and then we have the detail kind of roll up by every single budget category in all of the last pages. So that's kind of the budget overview for this month. We'll continue to come back to you each month. It's also really important that as we look at these additional expenditures that we need for year-end, that we provide the board with a full accounting for any of the additional things that we expend for the Mount Daniel project in particular, and then what our impact is to our ending year balance. So we'll also be coming back to you with that after the fiscal year ends, and you'll certainly receive another financial report based on May expenditures in June. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Michael. Are there any questions? Mr. Anderson?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Ms. Michael, so I'm just looking at the projected year-end activity table and trying to make sure I'm interpreting it correctly. And so the, I'm a little puzzled, and that probably means I'm interpreting it not correctly. So to clarify, the projected year-end actual, for instance, where it says state revenue, 7.2 million, it's projected as negative 350,000, but it's actually higher than the revised budget. So to me, I'm curious if revenue is projected to be higher than budgeted, why it shows up as a negative number?
That's an absolutely wonderful catch. When you look at that, all of our financial system reports post the revenue as a negative.
Okay, we're back to that, that discussion from the previous session.
Exactly. So we had done all of the calculations in, as a negative, so that projected year-end actual is incorrect from when we converted it, from all of the negatives to the positives for this reporting. So you are, you are absolutely correct that that projected year-end actual for revenue is incorrect.
Okay.
Right? And it had to do with that conversion between the negatives and the positives in terms of that revenue presentation, so we'll correct that.
Okay.
And that's an absolutely great catch. We really will be short state revenue. So, so both of those categories are wrong, though, because of those positives. It also doubled the variance when you look at that overall.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I was just trying to make sure I was interpreting that one correctly.
Yes, very, very, very good catch. So, and when you look at the bottom, just for everybody else, when you see the expenditure, so the salaries are actually done correctly, because we didn't do any conversions between the positive and the negative numbers. So for example, for salaries, that first line at the bottom, we're projecting that we expend 30.4 million when our budget was 31.6. So that's why you're seeing that variance of 1.2 million. So thank you for catching that. We will update the chart and then repost it.
Any additional questions? Mr. Castillo?
Hey, Mr. Chair, isn't FFNE capital?
So yes, what I would say is typically when you look at a project, certainly when you think of our George Mason High School project, that project includes FFNE. That's typically what is standard. You would assume that as you're building a new building, that you would incorporate FFNE. When you look at capitalizing expenditures, people typically only capitalize expenditures that are greater than $5,000. So when you look at something like library furniture, for example, right, as a whole, it's going to cost over $5,000, but the individual chairs and tables do not. So when you look at other school districts, many of them use kind of a split methodology in terms of what they fund with bond funding or what they don't. But typically, FFNE is included in that capital project and bond-funded. I, I can't explain to you why this project didn't include FFNE, other than the assumption, right, that potentially they knew they would have savings in terms of operating dollars that could offset that cost.
And, and any idea where we're at in terms of how that's going, and whether there'll be gas, gas in the tank?
So yes, when we look at salaries, which is our larger, largest expenditure.
I'm talking on the Mount Daniel side.
Oh, on the Mount Daniel project?
Yeah, it doesn't look like we're going to have a whole lot of savings at the end of it. And, and that savings that we do have, because of some other concerns, will be eaten up likely.
Other questions?
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Michael. And before we go into the closed meeting, just wanted to run over with the board, where the heck is that first? This is kind of the, as we wrap up the school year and getting ready to chat a little bit now with Dr. Noonan about evaluation, but also wanted to lay out for the public the schedule for doing the actual year-end evaluation, and just wanted to make sure that we all know that, and see if Dr. Noonan had any questions. Let me get it up here. So, so kind of the schedule that we're going to do, as we celebrate a little earlier this evening, this is Dr. Noonan's one-year anniversary. So we as a board will be conducting the superintendent's year-end evaluation, and the first portion of that will be on June 12th, where Dr. Noonan will present some of his goals and what, where he's accomplished with those goals. And we have a brief chat this evening, knowing full well that there will still be some outstanding information at that point, but presenting up until the, the current point right now. Then the board will have a couple of closed meetings on that evening, then a follow-up meeting on the 12th to discuss the evaluation. And then on July 1st is when we will sit down with Dr. Noonan to, to share the evaluation results that we have presented to him, and then for give him opportunity to ask us any questions that he may have. So we look forward to, to that. And do that, and see if you had any questions, or if the board had any questions. Mr. Reitinger is, as the vice chair, take the lead on conducting the, the evaluation for the superintendent. He had a meeting this evening, so I don't know if anyone had any questions or anything. Mr. Castillo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I thank you very much for scheduling this, this feedback session with the superintendent this evening. Based on some prior experience that I've had, I just want to check with Ms. Minson about what Virginia law requires with respect to the superintendent evaluation from a calendar standpoint, because we, we learned the hard way before about that. So I just want to make sure, is July 1st okay? Or does it have to be June 30th?
I think it's June 30, but let me, let me look and make sure. I know the Virginia code had.
And July 1st is a Sunday? I don't know if you want to.
Which is another reason.
Yeah. So our meeting.
You, you don't need to answer now, but just, just, I want to make sure that we're, we're good with that, because we, we.
We have run into, we have run into that before, yes.
Yes, I'll make sure.
All right, thank you.
We'll get some, bring some kinks out there, but we'll, if you have any questions, please let me know as we kind of do some finalizing.
Will do. Look forward to the feedback. Thank you.
All right, with that, are there any things else before we go into close? I guess, will we move across the halls to allow folks to kind of do the breakdown here, so, and can head out? And Ms. Goodell can leave us the, the sheets for when we open back up and do the certification, all those things, so that we, so we don't keep you all here. We're here long enough to let the storm come through and go, so that's the good thing. So, all right, and with that, so if there's nothing else, if someone would read this into close.
I move that pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, personnel under section 2.2-3711A1, in particular superintendent's evaluation.
Thank you so much. A second. Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Ms. Goodell?
Yes, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
All right.
Ms. Gill?
Hi.
Ms. Litten?
Hi.
Ms. Russell?
Hi.
And Mr. Webb?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, and we'll move across to your office.